Good evening. Notice of a Public Meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act. Notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a regular meeting on Tuesday, June 19, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the Commission Chambers on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall, O federal building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Arms of the Texas flag, the Pledge of Allegiance City, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for your love, your grace, and your mercy. We thank you for this nation that we're blessed to be a part of. And Lord God, we lift up the nations that so many people are fleeing from to get here. We ask you to change the conditions in those countries, bless them with an environment that they will not necessarily feel like they need to flee, Lord. Lord, we ask you to lead in God our President and our Congress to dealing with the issues along the border. Lead and guide each of us, Lord God. Father God, our hearts goes out to what's happening, and we ask for your answers, your solutions. Lord, we ask you to lead and guide this City Commission here tonight. Lead and guide our mayor, our commissioners, and everyone that presents tonight for the best for the City of Brownsville. And Lord, we look to you for your answers, in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Mayor's Activity Update?
Yes. First of all, thank you all for being here. The weather doesn't cooperate tonight, but we're here anyway. I'd like to address a situation that we're all facing right now, and I'm going to read most of this. As most of us know in our community and are well aware, there's been an overwhelming amount of publicity about families being literally torn apart on the pretext that it should be a deterrent from seeking asylum from their countries of origin due to violence creating life-threatening situations in their homeland. Some of those children have ended within shelters located in our city. Unfortunately, that kind of news coverage is, to say the least, unwelcome and should not be misconstrued. As a family known as the City of Brownsville, we neither condone nor endorse such policies. As a matter of fact, it is contrary to our values and beliefs as a community who welcomes our human family as brothers and sisters, which we are and will always be. Times like this makes us feel helpless and perhaps hopeless that there's not a magic remedy at our fingertips. But we must not despair. We must make our voices heard. We must stand up for our values and hold steady that we shall overcome. As a nation, we have had many troubling times and challenges that seem to be destroying the fabric of our democracy. But just as those times, we must all call on the better angels of our nature, as Lincoln said, and to prove to ourselves and the world that we, as a community, are better than this. We will seek and find a remedy that will prevail over the inhumane behavior that our present administration is pursuing. We have all heard all the condemnations, we have heard all the soundbites, we have heard all the divisiveness that is being promulgated by this action. Thus far, it has fallen on deaf ears. So what must we do? I say to you, as a city that we all love, we must stand united, voice our values, and take every opportunity to seek a solution for these children. In the meantime, let's figure out a way to tell these children and their families that we stand by them and we will fight to make sure that they are reunited. In the meantime, find out what we can do to comfort them and love them as a brother and a sister that they are to all of us. That's my statement. Thank you.
Next, we have Commissioner's Activity Update.
Two compliments to make, which are fun. First, I want to thank the Health Department and many, many other city staff that put together the first kickoff for Seculvia out on Morrison Road. There were quite a few people out there having fun, and it was a nice evening as well on top of that. Second compliment is to many city staff, including, and I believe starting with the Finance Department, for putting on the Budget Workshop at the library a few weeks ago. I did attend, and I wasn't sure what it was going to be like, and I have to say that even though the attendance was not as high as I would have liked, it was very telling and a very good exercise on how a city goes about preparing a budget. And I want to thank the staff for putting together a great project and hope that more people do attend the Budget Workshop next year.
I have a real quick comment, if anybody... Nope. Okay, so I just wanted to let the public know that about a week and a half ago, we had our first-ever hands-on CPR-only event. What it was, was Valley Regional Medical Center and the Brownsville Health Department and our Brownsville EMT. I really, really want to thank them. They gave up there Saturday, and from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, we taught hundreds of people, moms, baby, children, CPR basics. I think it's a very important skill and that every household should have. You don't need to be certified, but you need to know what to do if somebody has a heart attack or if somebody starts choking the basics. And so I'm really pleased to tell you that from now on, this is going to be an annual event here in Brownsville. It is completely free, and if you're a teacher, if you're certified, if you're certified and you want to become an instructor, come join us, help us, help us get our entire community CPR-oriented. And the second thing I want to tell you is that we have now hired our vet at the Brownsville Animal Regulation Center, Dr. Sarah Stevens... Stevens or Stevenson?
Stevens.
Stevens? Sorry, doctor. Dr. Sarah is now in the house at the Bark Center, and we are putting together, we are running all of our numbers, and we are crunching the numbers to get the lowest cost for spay and neuter possible. So we're hopefully looking, I'm hoping, maybe $30 a cat. It's going to be around that area, $30 a cat, $40 a dog. So definitely what we're aiming for is that you would be able to spay and neuter two to three pets under $100. And it's very important, and to us, that was very important to offer you that as a community because we have too many pets that are being put down for lack of finding a good home. And I'm just so excited, and I'm so grateful to city staff for working on this initiative, and especially the City Commission for supporting such an important endeavor. So make sure you always adopt. Please don't shop. And that is it. Thank you.
Mayor, I've got two items that I'd like to bring on my report. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank, on behalf of Jimmy Gonzalez's family, Mr. Michael Lopez, our city, and from city manager, Ms. Rachel Figueroa, Ms. Corinne Parrish, and all her staff at the Brownsville Event Center, Chief Orlando Rodriguez, and patrol staff from Brownsville PD. Thank you so very much for everything that you did so that we could make Jimmy's viewing accessible to the public, and for all of those people that came in from out of town, they were able to access our facilities. There were no complaints. We had, it was very smooth, very smooth transition. So thank you to you all for everything that you did. I know that it was a lot of phone calls, it was a lot of work, but thank you for what you did, and I believe that Mr. Gonzalez's family, they've said how appreciative they are that the city was able to support them in their time of need. The second of all is, I've got a report to give on drainage when it pertains to our drainage ponds and our drainage canals. I got a phone call over a project with Trails, and I didn't want to get involved in this project with Trails because I'm not a Trail guy. I've never been a supporter of the Trail project. But nonetheless, I got involved, and I don't want to do research because when I do research, I find out things that I don't want to find out. And then begins, I can't stop, and now I'm going to call you before you leave so that we can talk. But in doing so, you know, and speaking to the citizens of my area in District 1, it still remains the same, and the City Commission needs to focus on better streets, better sidewalks, better conditions for the neighborhood before we do anything else. Thus appoint the members from Gloria Street. I went over to survey Gloria Street, and mind you, it was a fairly good street up until the Manzano Project, and when the Manzano Project was done, the trucks went in and completely destroyed the street. So now, my call goes to Public Works so that we can go in and fix the street, but at the same time, the residents have their concerns, and they're going to be here tonight because they do have a couple of concerns that they wanted to bring up, but they are in desperate need of sidewalks. They are in desperate need of better streets, better conditions, and that's what we're getting at, and hopefully, we'll be able to, you know, to give them what they need. And in doing so, we also, part of my report is that I want to report on the Impala pumps. They fall right in Impala Street, and for those who don't know, our drainage canals are connected with our Resacas, and when we get rains like this, or even heavier rains, the rain goes off into two different parts. If you're in the north and the west part of town, your rainwater goes through the North Main Drain to the Port of Brownsville. If you live on the east side of town, on the south side of town where we do, it goes out to the Rio Grande River. Now, we've been working on drainage, and Public Works is out there up until 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock at night, and I can't thank these guys enough. They've been out there, they've been dredging the canals, they got a Bobcat down there, they're making it wider, making it deeper, and we've been talking to folks and taking back the easements through the drainage district, and thus, we're being successful and able to get more water out, and our people won't be stuck with conditions where the streets are filled with water because there's better flow. What we do need is the public's help. Mayor, I want to propose to the City Commission, and I'm going to sit with Michael next week, I want to propose an ordinance where people that rent their homes, not just in my part of town, in any part of town, that they be responsible for what their renters do with the properties. Renters leave, especially in my street. Renters leave, and they leave all of their stuff in front of the house. They leave mattresses, they left two commotes, they leave tires, they leave all this stuff, and they're expecting the city to go pick it up, and it's not the city's responsibility to go pick it up. The city is going to pick up brush. The city is going to pick up when you cut down your trees, when you leave all of that out there, but they're not responsible for picking up pallets for when you lay down grass, you know, everything that you had and you didn't want to take with you or your next move. So we need to hold either the leasing or the renter liable for these kinds of, you know, it's, I've been saying it for years and years and years, and I'm hoping, hoping that the City Commission will support me in being able to do this because it is a very big nuisance when people are driving on the streets. It's just aesthetically, it's not correct, and, you know, then you start getting animals, you start getting snakes, you start getting opossums, you start getting all kinds of buildup. So I'm looking forward, you know, hopefully, we can work that in the future. So just to let people know, the Impala pumps, right now, especially during hurricane season, when those things activate, and that's the maintenance that the guys are doing right now, the guys are out there clean, it's alimpiando todas las líneas, those things put out 120,000 gallons per pump, per minute, and we have four of them. So you can imagine, four pumps at 120,000 gallons a minute, that's what they're putting out into the Rio Grande, that's what they're sending out to the North Main Drain. So please bear with us, a lot of the times, I always, always, always during this time remind the citizens, if we get a rain that lasts for an hour steadily, half an hour, and it collects, give it 30 minutes. You know, we understand that water's going to sit, but if you give it 30 minutes, 45 minutes, it's going to go away. Just give it some time. We do have some bad parts in town, no doubt about it, there are some bad parts in town where the water does take a little bit longer, but if you give it at least 30 to 45 minutes, the water will recede and the water will go away. Thank you.
Thank you, and I also, I don't see, maybe Santana's out there, I can't see him, but did a marvelous job, but also PUB helped out in that effort, and Mike, I think we are, you and I were in contact with each other over the weekend to make sure that that happened. So thank you, all of the people from the city, as well as PUB.
Mayor, are you taking additional comments?
Go ahead, Judge.
Okay. I just want to go back to and say that I share the sentiments of the mayor, and we're again thrust into, you know, the spotlight here, and we don't always like being here. But it's important for us, in order to solve the problem, to differentiate the different moving parts that are involved, and realize that our city only has limited authority to deal with this, and that the people holding the kids, Southwest Key, for example, are bound by contract with government agency that's executing federal policy. So if you look at the different parts, you'll know where you need to work to solve the problem that bothers you the most. And we are, you know, on top of this, and we're looking at what we can, and we've met about this, and we're monitoring what we can and what we're authorized to do. But as a community, you know, we can also come together, and just before the meeting, I got a call from my friend Rusty Harwood, who's been appointed as a vice chair of the National Chess Council, and they're reaching out because they want to provide chess boards, chess games to these kids, and they want to also provide instruction. So this is something, as a community, we can also help, not just as a city of Brownsville in its official capacity. So I'm reaching out to the public, if anyone else has things that they want to try to contribute in that respect, we can at least help them that way. So that's all I have to say on that.
Thank you.
If I may, Mayor, sorry for being late, the rain kind of caught me. Yesterday, I was having a discussion with Commissioner Tetro, and I guess you made a pronunciation against the separation of the families, so I just put a little thoughts together, and I just wanted to take the time to actually read it, and we were discussing this yesterday, and some of these thoughts came to mind. And this is just my personal view, it's not the city's view, it's just a nice discussion yesterday, but like many of our neighbors, we're extremely troubled by the forcible separation of children from their families at the border. Although we recognize the need to enforce our nation's immigration laws and to secure or protect our borders, we do not believe that separating families is consistent with who we are as a country, and it certainly doesn't reflect who we are as a community. Family unification has been a fundamental tenet of American policy and American law since the end of World War II. This tenet came about after two shameful events, which will live in our memory, and the first is the internment of Japanese-Americans. The second one is the denial of entry permits to German Jews that came on board the St. Louis, and at one point, there was a Senator Robert Wagner and Representative Edith Rogers from Massachusetts, who in February of 1939 actually tried to pass a bill that would allow 20,000 German Jewish children into the US. Just like immigration reform, it never happened. As Americans, we have a moral obligation to help people fleeing from prosecution, and it's something we are proud of. As the former First Lady Laura Bush reminded us, Americans pride ourselves on being a moral nation, on being the nation that sends humanitarian relief to places devastated by natural disasters, famine, or war. If we are truly that country, then it is our obligation to reunite these detained children with their parents and to stop separating parents and children in the first place. As Commissioner Neese and the mayor mentioned, we are working what we can do as a community, but we want to know, we want everybody to understand that we are against this, this is cruel, this is inhumane, and we stand as citizens of this earth against this, and I hope that everybody will draw attention to this issue. And I know it's bad press for Brownsville in one sense, but it also draws the national attention to something that's been going on for a while. And we've been in need of immigration reform for a while, and maybe this is what will be the catalyst. Unfortunate, but it might be. So I just want to remind everybody that we've had some black guys in our history, and we should not be bound to repeat that past. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Just to echo the sentiments of Commissioner Neese, yourself, and Commissioner De Leon, I agree, as a mother, as a representative of the area where Southwest Key is located, I know that the people that work there, I know them, they're my friends, a lot of them, and they do a good job. They have a contract with the government, and they are good to the children, but I don't like the separation, and I am firmly against it. And as a mother, as a human, and as a city leader, with every bone in my body, I stand against anybody who ever tries to take a child away from their parents.
Thank you, Commissioners. Okay, presentations?
Next, we have presentations. We have National Hispanic Institute at the Tip of Texas Proclamation.
Let's go on both sides, guys, okay, so that we can all fit in here.
Move down, move down, move down.
Don't be scared. Make sure y'all are all in the photograph, okay? Yeah, there we go. That's a great team, great debate.
So everyone who's watching us from home and in the gallery, the National Hispanic Institute has been in the valley for a couple of years. It was started by Dr. Garcia back in the 80s, and I know even your son, Mayor, was one of the first classes that actually went to the National Hispanic Institute's leadership. It's a disruptive leadership institution, and we are forming the future leaders of tomorrow. And with this, it's a great honor to recognize all of these youngsters who I've had full weeks to get to know, and I want to congratulate Ricardo, who's actually the project administrator, and Mr. Jorge Lee. I don't know if Jorge's here, but thanks to them, we were able to go to Sherman, and we won the cup. So with this, whereas, yeah, we beat teams from all across the state of Texas, so we should be very proud. We have, I've always said that Brownsville has a lot of talent, and we just need to create more opportunities for our talent. So with this, whereas the National Hispanic Institute was founded in 1979 by Ernesto Nieto and Gloria De Leon, who saw the rapidly expanding US Latino youth population as a source of bright, forward-thinking young minds that could become involved in community leadership, development, and recognized that if the Latino community did not cultivate the brightest young minds to reinvest in the community's causes, their potential could forever be lost to other interests. Whereas the National Hispanic Institute is a leading organization that fosters future community leaders for the expanding Latino community throughout the United States and Latin America by creating experiences that engage high-potential and high-achieving students in learning experiences that inspire their imagination, develop their repertoire of skills and competencies, broaden their knowledge of Latino culture, and make community leadership a lifelong learning commitment. Whereas the Brownsville chapter of the National Hispanic Institute at the Tip of Texas is dedicated to providing the City of Brownsville with a sustainable reservoir of leadership, and it's celebrating their 25th anniversary this year. Whereas on June 7, 2018, the National Hispanic Institute at the Tip of Texas from Brownsville attended one of the institute's most prestigious programs, the competition of the Texas Great Debate in Sherman, Texas at Austin College. Students competed in the categories of mock trial, cross-examination, oratory, and extemporaneous speaking. Finalists in said categories, as well as All States Award recipients, include Mariana Diaz, Lucas Edge, Emiliano Loyah, Julia Álvarez, Rafael Flores, José Tomás Marine Lee, Tomás Edge, Sebastián Herrera, María Rene Garza, Ana Paola García, Alana Samano, and Jacob Soto. And whereas the National Hispanic Institute at the Tip of Texas for the sixth time earned the prestigious Silver Cup at the annual National Hispanic Institute Great Debate Competition. Now, therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, by virtue and the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby honor and recognize all of you, the National Hispanic Institute at the Tip of Texas, and further appall call the citizens of Brownsville to celebrate the members of the National Hispanic Institute who have demonstrated excellence in the face of challenge and serve an inspiration to the students and all the leaders of this community.
Ricardo's going to give us a few words, Mayor.
Sure.
Just a few other words. On behalf of the National Hispanic Institute, Tino Villarreal, myself, I would like to thank the City of Brownsville for this recognition. Each year, students who participate in the Texas Great Debate dedicate months of training and preparation for this event. Ninth graders across the state of Texas are given the task to tackle on important issues facing our community, far beyond the ninth grade level. This year, students engage with concepts of social labeling and its effects on the US Latino community. Employing NHI's pedagogy of student self-learning, students learn to think critically and articulate their thoughts and ideas amongst themselves. Our Brownsville region, our team, is sustained through our volunteer staff comprised of other high school students, alumni of this same program, who get their time to train and collaborate with a new group of NHIers. I am incredibly proud of the determination, discipline, and respect that our 2018 cohort has demonstrated this year, and I would like to once again thank the City of Brownsville for its commitment to invest in our future leaders. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Employee of the Month, Francisca H. Lucio, maintenance worker, Site 2, from the Brownsville Public Library.
Good evening.
Commissioners. My name is Juan José Guerrero, the library director, library services. I want to present this honor, present it to the señora Francisca Lucio. The month of May, the month of June, the employee, we know her as a Panchita. She started working with the library in 2008, pardon, in May of 2008. Panchita is an excellent employee. She works tirelessly to finish all the tasks. She loves her job, she does it every day. She's always ready to do everything necessary to finish her job. The best of all, she's always doing it with a good attitude. Panchita always stays occupied, never stops. I've never seen her sitting down. She works very well with her colleagues. She's always ready to help them if she can. She's admired by her colleagues, her job, and her dedication and effort. Panchita is an employee who almost never leaves her job. She's never taken vacations, even she's two years and a half and hasn't taken a vacation. Panchita always arrives early, maybe an hour, an hour before. It's a gift of the clock, it doesn't work because she arrives early. As an employee, Panchita receives a pin, a plaque, with her name, and a clock. She also gets a break, if she wants to. She's also eligible for the year-end, for the employee of the year, at the end of the year. Felicidades, Francisca, it's an honor, and thank you for all your work.
Gracias, Francisca.
Buenas noches, otra vez.
Buenas noches.
And I thank you for all of this, for the encouragement you gave me, and much more than I ever thought.
Oye, y toma vacaciones.
Para que? Take a break from work.
Yo sé. Gracias, Panchita.
Next, we have Consent Agenda Items, A through G.
Do you approve? Second?
All who stand in favor, say aye. Motion carries.
Next, we have our public hearings. Public hearing number five, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-021 to rezone from Dwelling G to Apartment H for lots 9, 10, 11, and 12 Canyon Valley subdivision replat located near Menchaca Court.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. This first case is an appeal. The applicant requested to rezone from The applicant requested to rezone from dwelling G to apartment H. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended to rezone only the area district from dwelling G to dwelling H on May 3, 2018. To overturn this decision, it would require a three-fourth majority vote tonight. Here is the aerial. To the north are single-family dwellings. To the east is undeveloped land and some commercial businesses. To the south are single-family dwellings, apartments, and commercial businesses, as well as to the west. Here is the zoning map. This subdivision, it's along this street, it's a one-street subdivision. It is zoned dwelling G. Right here is Old Port Isabel. North of the property is light retail 2C. South of the property is dwelling G, and then a specific use permit for apartments. And south of that is apartments, as well as a specific use permit for apartments. To the east of the property is general retail 4C. This is part of the transition central district in our future land use plan. This district is comprised of mostly residential land with a mix of other uses. Residential uses should have a density of two dwelling units per acre and consist primarily of single-family dwellings. Here is the 200-foot radius map. There were 28 mailouts and zero written opposition in this case. This request is not consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from dwelling G to dwelling H. Again, this is an appeal. They originally applied for apartment H.
Okay, is anyone here on this issue?
I'd like to begin by giving you a handout of the...
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. So, I am the developer of the subdivision, and we do have, as I mentioned before, we do have an owners' association, and we submitted together with this appeal, we submitted a letter in support of this rezoning. We have 25 lots, each one is a vote. Each member, each lot owner is a vote, and we all got together and put this letter together for you guys. And if you will look at my exhibit, all around the area, within a mile area, a radius, there are apartments. We have Calle Village Apartments less than a mile away, point one mile away. We have R&amp;B Apartments, point two miles away. Sunview Apartments, point six miles away. We have Lantana Apartments, point eight miles away. Roxy Apartments, point nine miles away. Lakeview Apartments, a mile away. And the city of Brownsville just issued a building permit on March 19, 2018 for some townhomes, less than half a mile away from the project. So this is why we would like to be allowed to use our property as apartment use. Thank you.
I have a question for Planning and Zoning. About three years ago, we had another applicant around this, within one block, that wanted to build a multimillion-dollar apartment complex. It was one of the nicest things I had ever seen. And at the time, the Planning and Zoning staff member, who's no longer in that department, told me that if I approved it, it would be spot zoning, and that was illegal. Do you feel like this case would be considered spot zoning?
Well, we do find that it would be inconsistent with the future land use plan. And for some of the cases that he did point out, they did receive a specific use permit. So this is a way to kind of, to make it allowed.
Circumvent.
So when the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended to see area district be essentially upzoned, so it would allow more units, they also recommended they obtain a specific use permit.
Let me ask you a question. Okay, so he obtains a specific use permit. These people got specific use permits, but nonetheless, they built, and the apartments are there. Okay? So, okay, he'll get a specific use. These people got specific uses, and once again, we still have apartments. So, was he told that at the beginning? Was he not? Because this is costing him money. And if it's one thing that I hate, it's for citizens to be coming back and paying money out of their pocket for something that could have been taken care of in-house at our offices. So, was he told at the beginning that if he won a specific use, that he would have been able to build?
Yes, we did meet before he submitted the application, and we did make that recommendation.
Were you aware of that?
Yes, Commissioner, they let me know that I wouldn't need a specific use permit, but it would eliminate the, I would have to have a plan before. And I would have to spend on that plan right now to be able to present at this point.
Before you were even allowed to zone?
Right. I don't see the difference. We're still gonna work within the boundaries of the eight designation, and, you know, we're not gonna make their 30 or 40 apartments, it's just whatever it allows us to do. I think it's redundant having to do a specific use and then rezone, you know, rather than rezone, it gives us more time to prepare for the project. We did have to pay a $300 appeal fee. You know, the other route would have been pay for a specific use, which is $500, it's just a $200 difference. I don't feel specific uses necessary, because we did develop this property, I'm the developer of the property, and the intent was for multifamily use. And like I said, we have all the owners, not just one or two, all of them signed a petition saying, "We want this, and we have no problem with it."
The owners, I'm sorry, the owners of the neighborhood signed your petition?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. They did. It's in the presentation.
Anyone else here on this issue? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Motion to close public hearing, second.
All those in favor say aye. Motion carries.
I don't like it. Shouldn't be doing that to neighborhoods.
Do we have a motion to approve? That was to close public hearing?
That was just to close public...
I would make a motion to approve.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And for the record, I'm in a state that I never, I approved it, but I never like seeing apartments in neighborhoods. It's wrong.
Okay. Item number six.
Mayor and Commissioners, at this time, we would like to move agenda item number six after number 10 at the request of the owner.
Okay, I'm sorry, you did tell me that ahead of time. Okay, item number seven.
Public hearing number seven, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-025 to rezone from light retail G to general retail G for 0.764 acres out of 1.13 acres of West Side Block 48, Share 19, El Jardín subdivision, located at 1740 Old Port Isabel Road.
So this property is currently zoned light retail G, and they're asking if it changed to general retail G. The proposed use is a dog education and adoption center. It is for the Brownsville Animal Defense. It is along Old Port Isabel, right here. To the northwest and to the south are some single-family dwellings, apartments, and commercial businesses. To the east of the property, there is single-family dwellings. Here is the zoning map. Along Old Port Isabel, there are different commercial uses, including Kitty Corner. Across from here, there is general retail 4C.
And what did you say it was gonna be?
Dog education and adoption center. It's requested by the Brownsville Animal Defense.
My dogs are gonna be the first ones to go get trained. That's a very valuable service.
Okay.
So here is the 200-foot radius map. There were 23 mailouts and zero written opposition. This is consistent with the comprehensive plan of future land use plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from light retail G to general retail G.
Okay, anyone here on this issue? Obviously not. Do I hear a motion?
Close.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number eight.
Public hearing number eight, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-602-CU in ordinance allowing a conditional use permit for the sale of on-premises alcohol for Lot 23, Block 4, Summit Place addition to the city of Brownsville, located at 2447 East 14th Street.
So this property is along 14th Street. It is zoned Seventh Commercial. However, they are asking for a conditional use permit in order to have a bar at this location. It's currently not meeting all the land spacing requirements. To the north, south, east, and west, there are single-family dwellings and commercial Here is the zoning map. So the dark brown is the light industrial, so that is most of this area. There were 35 mailouts and zero written opposition. This is consistent with the comprehensive plan of future land use plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission supports this conditional use permit for the sale of on-premise alcohol, a bar, and light industrial J.
Okay, is anyone here on this issue?
Close.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Motion carries.
Would approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number nine.
Public hearing number nine, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-904 to rezone from dwelling Z to dwelling G for Lago Valle subdivision, Section 1, and the remaining 32.211 acres of Share 1, Espíritu Santo Grant, located near the corner of Northway Expressway 77 and Vittorio Alefri Avenue.
So this is near the expressway. Right here, excuse me, right here is the South Texas Academy for Medical Professionals. This area is currently zoned dwelling Z, and this is a city-initiated case where asking if it changed to dwelling G. Here is the zoning map. As you can see, most of the area is zoned dwelling. South of the property, it is general retail 4C. There were 25 mailouts and zero written opposition. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan of future land use plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from dwelling Z to dwelling G.
Anyone here on this issue?
Close.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Would approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 10.
Public hearing number 10, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-905 to rezone from dwelling Z to dwelling F for Los Olmos Phase 1 and Los Olmos Phase 1A located near Abrego Road.
This is a city-initiated case. This property is currently zoned dwelling Z. We're asking it be changed to dwelling F. Here is the aerial for reference. Right here is FM 803. To the northwest and east, there's undeveloped land and single-family dwellings. And to the south, there is also some commercial businesses. Here's the zoning map. As you can see, most of it is zoned dwelling. Along 803, there are some commercial uses. Here is the 200-foot mailing radius. There were 166 mailouts and zero written opposition in this case.
Anyone here on this issue?
Why did everybody run outside?
Close.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Would approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Madam Secretary, are we gonna go back to item number six or not?
Yes, next, we're going to public hearing number six. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-023-S to allow a wireless communication facility, a general retail use in dwelling A for approximate 0.0539 acres out of the eastern portion of Lot 1, Block 1, Central Christian subdivision located at 1100 Alton Glor Boulevard.
So here is the aerial. This case is for a cell phone tower, a wireless communication facility. It will be located on Central Christian, I'm sorry, Central Christian Church, along Alton Glor. To the north, south, east, and west, there are single-family dwellings. Also, to the east, there are some commercial businesses. Here's the zoning map. Along Alton Glor, there are different commercial uses. And then, to the north and south of it, it is residential zoned dwelling. Here's the 200-foot radius map. There were 52 mailouts and zero written opposition. Here is the site plan.
What did you say as far as the mailouts? How many mailouts were there?
There were 52 mailouts and zero written opposition. The representative is also here. He would like to make a presentation. And the Planning and Zoning Commission supports a specific use permit to allow a wireless communication facility in dwelling A, with the condition that the property must comply with all city codes and regulations as determined in the site plan review process.
Is anyone here on this issue?
Commissioners, my name is Vince Hebinger. I appreciate it. This basically is a site that is being constructed for T-Mobile. It'll handle other carriers, and I can go through this real quick if you'd like, and then you can ask me questions. It's located in the back of the parking lot on Central Christian, along the major arterial, which is Alton Glor. It's a commercial corridor. You can see Charlie Clark's new dealership right next door. So it also complies with your codes. It is stealth, it meets residential setbacks, and it sits away from, so it's a least obtrusive or intrusive type of facility. These are the, what I call, the coverage maps. They look like Doppler radar maps. We've seen a lot of that today, as you can tell, it got caught in the rain. But it's a before and after picture, and the red is always good. The reason why we're here again, we were here a couple of years ago, I was, for a site for Verizon that we put on the city property. But it's a capacity thing again, we all know that. I mean, it's driving the infrastructure crazy on the sites. We're having to offload data and calls from those sites to keep up with our demand. Four times data volume in 2016 is expected to double by 2020. So, you know, we just all need the phones. Here's something I didn't know, there's the Brownsville app. We keep downloading apps, and, you know, that takes up space on the towers, Brownsville ISD as well. But we did check for everything. We looked at all the locations along that corridor. This is a map of what we looked at, and we picked the best location possible. There were some people that weren't interested, there were some that didn't work. Again, I'll shorten this up, there's, if you have any questions, we had a couple of sites that were within that mile radius, but they didn't work at all. We looked at that quite extensively, and these are the photosims, what it's gonna look like. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here?
Close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Next, we have the public comment period. No one did sign up for the public comment period, so we'll move on to the next agenda item.
Okay.
Items for individual consideration, action item number 12, consideration in action to appoint six members to the Main Street Advisory Board.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioner. We are asking for the appointment of six board members to replace the inaugural Main Street Advisory Board, whose terms ended on May 31st. Requirements to serve on the board include being a downtown property or business owner, a supporter of downtown redevelopment, or knowledgeable about economic development, historic preservation, or architecture. On this slide are the applications we received for the six available board positions. So at this time, we are asking for your appointment of the six available positions.
I'll move to reappoint Mr.
I'll move to reappoint Mr. Marcos Ochoa. He's currently serving, right?
Yes. I'm going to cross them out as you mean them.
I move to appoint Mr. Marcos Ochoa.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I move to appoint Jesse...
I'll vote aye on that, sorry. I was sleeping.
I move to appoint Jesse Miller.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I move to appoint Josh Behere.
I'll second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Tremens?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'll move to appoint Angelica Macias.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We got one more.
I'll move to appoint Estela Valdez.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have action item number thirteen. Consideration in action to appoint or reappoint one member to the Brownsville Public Utility Youth Board.
I'd move to appoint Ms. Anna O'Quinn.
Second?
There's a motion, a second, for Anna O'Quinn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I think that's the majority. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Do you want a roll call? Okay.
Okay, we'll have a roll call. Commissioner...
Aye.
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 Commissioner Galan?
May.
Aye.
You got your majority there.
Next item. Action item number fourteen. Consideration in action on Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation project funding recommendations for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen capital projects grant spring cycle.
Mayor and Commissioners, I guess the teamwork has gone a little extra. Rebecca Castillo couldn't make it to the meeting due to flooding in San Benito, not in Brownsville yet. So I will be presenting for her. Brownsville Community Improvement, they do have money set aside for capital improvements, for capital improvement projects, and they do go through a process where they look at the... They look at what's applied for, and then they figure out how do they distribute it. It's based on downtime realizations, increased recreational tourism, and support cultural and sports and fitness recreational. These are the applicants that applied, and what the BCIC group did approve. They have to come to the City Commission for approval. As you see, the San Fernando Building Restoration, the City of Brownsville Fire Training Field Renovation, and the Palo Alto's Grove Park. That's what they're recommending to approve for the BCIC. And they offered up what was the San Fernando Building Restoration project would be. The funding amount is one-twenty-five, and they'd be rehabbing the San Fernando as we continue to move in Market Square, getting the rehab behind it. Fire Training Field Renovation Project, again, this is an opportunity to provide better training for our staff, I think. So I think it's also a great project. And then, as you're aware, Mayor and Commissioners, there is a move to make a Palo Alto Grove out there by the sports park, and this offers money for a park that would serve about a thousand families living in that area, underserved population. Again, that's the view of the Palo Alto Groves, and questions if I can answer, I think I should be able to.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Commissioner Neese, or Commissioner Mungia, you guys are on the board.
Great projects. Easy to select those.
They're recommended, I think. Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Rebecca.
Next, we have action item number fifteen. Consideration in action to award a contract for the Dana Road Addition four-hundred-feet Section Right Turn Lane Improvement Project located at the intersection of FM eight-oh-two and Dana Road.
Honorable Members of Commissioners, good evening. This project is to extend or actually build the right turn lane at the corner of intersection of Dana and eight-oh-two. We're hoping that this would help alleviate some of the traffic congestion at that intersection. We recommend approval.
I really thank you for that. The people that live there will really appreciate it.
Motion to approve?
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Carlos.
Thank you.
Number sixteen?
Action item number sixteen. Consideration in action to award a purchase and delivery of two new fire pumpers and one new rear-mounted telescoping ladder truck for the Brownsville Fire and EMS Department.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. We're requesting approval to award a contract to Metro Fire Apparatus Specialist out of the Houston area to basically build, custom-built two-pumper apparatus and one ladder truck for the Brownsville Fire Department that are in need of replacement. The ones we'll be replacing are about eighteen years old, all the trucks. They're going to go into reserve status for a couple more years, and we should have them pretty quick, as far as the pumpers and ladder truck takes a little bit of time to build. The total amount would be probably about a little over two and a half million dollars, two million six-hundred-seventy-seven thousand. They'll be located in the Alton Glor Fire Station, one pumper. One will be on Los Sevenos there by Old Dallas Road, at Station Four, and then a ladder truck downtown.
Motion to approve?
Is this... Was this put out for bids?
We did meet with several manufacturers. They didn't go out for a bid process. We went through the HGAC.
A buy board, like a buy board thing?
Yes. They were able to basically custom-build these pumpers for them. We met probably with six different manufacturers. They offered... They were the only ones that really offered a bumper-to-bumper warranty for several years. They were one of the closest vendors to this area.
Where is this buy board located?
This one's HGAC. It should be... It has the buy board contract on here, out of Houston-Galveston Area Council.
Out of Galveston?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion?
When to approve?
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number seventeen?
Action item number seventeen. Consideration in action to award a contract for the architectural services for various pool and splash pad repairs.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission. And just so you are aware, that the little blue bags have your welcome to the Fourth of July event that we're hosting, and it has your parking pass in there. So it's small. Look for it that way. And you're all more and more than welcome to attend. It is a great show, and great for families. We seek your approval to award contract to GMS Architects of Brownsville, Texas. The architectural service fee is seven-point-five percent in the amount of ninety-seven-five-hundred, and the budget is available from some CO fundings we have set aside for repairs to SAMs. The decking is due, the tunnel that is under the pool, the... It needs a new liner and replastering in SAMs, so there's a lot of work that it needs to be done, and then as well as some other splash pad improvements as well.
Thank you for the little gift package there, Fourth of July.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number eighteen?
Action item number eighteen. Consideration in action to approve amendment number one of the advance funding agreement between the City of Brownsville and the Texas Department of Transportation regarding the traffic signals.
Honorable Members of Commissioners, this item is texted related. It's to amend an existing advance funding agreement for the installation of some traffic signals. The project calls for city participation of three-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars additional. We've already paid one-hundred-and-sixty-three of it. We have a balance of one-forty-three, which will be due in October. We recommend approval of this.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Carlos.
This will be synchronized, right?
Not to install new signals.
Oh. But they'll be synchronized, right?
Yes, yes.
Wonderful.
Thanks.
Item number nineteen? Thank you, Carlos.
Action item number nineteen. Consideration in action to adopt ordinance number two thousand and eighteen dash sixteen forty-six authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of up to twenty-five million aggregate principal amount of City of Brownsville, Texas Combination Tax and Airport Revenue Certificates of Obligations, hearings two thousand and eighteen, securing the payment thereof by authorizing the levy of an annual ad valorem tax and a pledge of certain surplus revenues of the city's airports, and approving and authorizing the execution of a paying agent, register agreement, a purchase contract, an official statement, and all other instruments and procedures related thereto.
Good evening, Honorable Members of City and Commissioners. I'll introduce Noi Nahosa, the financial advisor with the state.
Nicest pun.
Good evening, Mayor and Members of the Commission, Noi Nahosa, for the record. Basically, that before used to adopt or approve the sale of about twenty-five million dollars. We received the bids just last week, I believe, on the airport project. We're currently reviewing those, crossing all our Ts, dotting all our Is. Been working with Sean and Brian back there, and Pete and Lupa here. Michael's been instrumental in going through all this.